Okay. Why are we in there? I don't know. Um, yeah, good point. I don't know. When was her first meeting? Or was it, no? Anyway, that just makes it feel crazy that it's December now. Twenty-two days.
And the short agenda. Yes, yes. This is very. Welcome to the Planning Commission's 2018 December hearing. This month, we have only one item. It's an information item on green buildings policy update. And then we'll proceed to our business meeting and nomination of officers for next year. For those of you tuning in, the Planning Commission is a body established under Virginia State Code and is charged by the County Board to advise it on matters of planning and land use. As we are only hearing an information item this evening, there will be no public speakers. All Planning Commission meetings are video and audio taped, so remember to turn your cell phones off during the proceedings while you're in this room. And so with that, Madam Clerk, will you please call the item?
Our item this evening is on the green building policy update. We have Joan Kelch and Jessica Aberland to present this item for us.
Good evening. Thank you for coming.
Thank you for having us. We're very happy to be here. My name is Joan Kelch, and this is my colleague Jessica Aberland. And we both work for the Department of Environmental Services, and we're on the Rethink Energy Team. So we work in the Office of Sustainability on our climate programs, green buildings, energy initiatives. We were last before the Planning Commission four years ago. I don't think, was anybody, I don't think anybody on here was there. Maybe Jane's the only one, because you're our connection.
Um, you did a redo of the policy. You do it every five years, correct?
Well, we do it when it's needed. So I think we did it four years ago.
I heard that redo, and I think Nancy Yakimini, who unfortunately can't be here.
Yeah, I think Nancy was too.
So, welcome again.
Thank you. And we're more than happy to answer any questions through the process. But this is a program that's been in place since 1999, so we're coming up on the 20th anniversary of the Green Building Incentive Program. It's a program that addresses site plan projects and helps them, helps incentivize private developers to build buildings that are more energy efficient, more water efficient, healthier indoor air quality, that generally just sit more lightly on the land and have a smaller environmental footprint. We're here tonight because our colleague Rich Dooley, who I think came to you last month, told us that he had given a presentation on the Community Energy Plan. And the Green Building Incentive Program is the biggest implementation program within the CEP that addresses buildings. So it's been around for 20 years. It's well-established. Developers like it. We like it. It works very well, and it helps us reach those Community Energy Plan greenhouse gas reduction goals. I guess I will just introduce Jessica at this point. Jessica actually does most of the work on the program at this point. She knows site plans inside and out and what all of their green components are. And she's going to talk a little about the successes and how the program works.
Thank you for having me. Again, my name is Jessica Aberland, and I've worked for Arlington County on this program since 2009. And so I want to share with you today some photos and examples of some of the work that's gone into these green buildings in Arlington. And this will show you some of the strategies that are being implemented and have been implemented over the last 10 to 15 years that are moving us toward achieving our Community Energy Plan goals. So I'm going to do a quick breeze through a report that we put together last year, and then I'll come back to this PowerPoint and just do nuts and bolts of what the Green Building Incentive Program is. And, where do I full-screen this? Yeah, hold on. I have it automated from start, so I don't know how to do it once it's been. So I really love the cover photo on this report, because I think it illustrates pretty well a green building versus a non-green building. So at the front of the photo is 1776 Wilson that has some pretty prominent green features. You can see the white roof and solar panels on the top, the vegetated roof on the other end of that same building, and access for the tenants to enjoy that outdoor green space. Next to it is just a standard building that was built just a couple of years earlier than that, 1800 Wilson. You can see just a typical black roof that, and then standard heat pumps. So, good illustrative photo here. I'm going to breeze through just some background. So, from 2006 to 2016, you're probably familiar with this, there was a lot of growth in Arlington, over 20 million square feet of new construction, and 20,000 residents coming to Arlington. The good news is that, over that same time period, energy use in Arlington has not grown, has actually remained flat and even is slightly decreasing. And same with water use. So our green buildings are a big part of why this is happening. It's not the only part, but one of the benefits of the Green Building Incentive Program, excuse me, is that it incentivizes emerging technologies like LEDs and dual flush toilets. And then that gains broader market adoption in other existing buildings that are doing renovations in the area, and makes those technologies more affordable. So you've said, we've seen broad-spread adoption of these green building technologies in Arlington and in the region. So I'm mostly focusing tonight on some of the energy-saving technologies and strategies implemented in these green buildings. So at the top, this is a photo at M. Flats, which was built in Crystal City. That is a bunch of foam board insulation that's about to be installed on their roof, their roof insulation. The second photo there is at the Springs in Ballston. That is a wall, an interior wall, that has a really high-quality cellulose insulation. The third photo there is at the Latitude that opened its doors a couple of years ago. And that is a very efficient HVAC system up there on the roof. It's called variable refrigerant flow, and we're starting to see more of that with our new construction, particularly in multifamily. The fourth photo there is at Union on Queen, also called Pierce Queen. That's between here and Roslyn. That's a photo of an energy raider that is setting up to do a diagnostic test called a duct blaster test. And a duct blaster test tests to make sure that the ductwork in the apartment unit is tight and well-sealed, so that all the air conditioning and heating that has been made doesn't just leak out of the building or into somebody else's space, and actually gets to the room to make the occupant more comfortable. And then that last photo, number five at the bottom, is a photo of 2211 North Pershing that used daylighting strategies in their parking garage, so they could put in fewer electric light fixtures to save energy. So what we did with the data that we got from these green buildings is added up all of their energy conservation measures, like the ones I just described, and other things like high-efficiency boilers, low-energy windows. And when you add all of those up, you can compare it to a baseline building of the same size. Each building has to do this for their LEED certification. And so in adding all of those up, all of the energy saved by those green buildings was 107,000,000,000 British thermal units, which is roughly the equivalent of taking 1,600 homes off the grid. And a couple of our takeaways from that that I wanted to share is that the bigger the buildings that participate, the bigger the impact they have. So really big buildings participating in our program make a bigger difference. And then also that even if buildings are just 10% or 20% or 30% more energy-efficient, which many of our buildings are here, those savings really add up when you get most new construction, as we do, participating in the program. And so just a 20% more energy-efficient building adds up to really big greenhouse gas reductions. Similarly, we added up the water saved in these buildings through things like dual flush toilets, waterless urinals, faucet aerators, and found about 40 million gallons are estimated to be saved every year. That's the equivalent of 2 million showers. I'm just going to skip through some of these other items, so that we have time for questions and to go through the program. So, green roofs. This is a photo of a vegetated roof at 1400 Crystal Drive. And this is a green roof that can be, tenants can go out there, and there's a little patio so they can enjoy the space. And then also, green roofs are really important for reducing the heat island effect in Arlington, which has an energy impact. The more heat islands that we, more of a heat island effect that we have, the more we need to have air conditioning to cool our buildings and areas. I would like to see more green buildings, right, or more green roofs, vegetated roofs. Most of the time, developers do white roofs, which is good, but it doesn't have as great an effect as a vegetated roof. And this is a photo that just shows that green buildings take expertise. So at the top are, is the, and create jobs. So the top is the insulation of a green roof, actually here at Courthouse Plaza. And the second photo is an energy raider that is setting up for a duct blaster test at the TLP building. And the bottom photo is another energy raider that's setting up for a blower door test at an apartment. And the blower door test is that test that you might be familiar with, that tests air leakage. So that's really good for making sure that air conditioning stays inside the unit or the heating. It's also good for reducing pests and smells from other units, so it's also good for indoor air quality for those tenants. So, this is a list of all of the buildings 2006-2016 that earned LEED certification here in Arlington. And since then, I think we're up to 46, actually. We've had a lot of buildings complete over the last couple of years. And so these numbers have all grown, all the energy savings and water savings. And I think it's, we're on a good trajectory. That said, Arlington has committed to the Paris Climate Agreement, and there are some really, really ambitious goals with our Community Energy Plan, and I think it's just the start. And we're going to keep looking at it and see, it's about time to update it again soon, so we'll probably come back to you again sometime in the next few months in the future to have that discussion. So, I just want to spend a little bit of time going through the nuts and bolts of the program, and a couple of frequently asked questions. So, the Green Building Incentive Program is based on the most updated version of LEED, LEED version 4. So it has updated energy standards and water standards, so it's more rigorous than older versions of LEED. In addition to that, there are a few other requirements that all the projects do when they participate in our program. So, all developments commit to reporting their energy use back to us for a period of 10 years to help us evaluate the program. All multifamily buildings install all Energy Star appliances and WaterSense plumbing fixtures. All office buildings commit to recertify under Energy Star, which is based on actual energy bills, so they have to perform also. This was part of the most recent update, that we wanted this program to not just be about design and construction, but actual performance over time. There is an option for multifamily to also commit to Energy Star certification for a little bit of extra bonus density. And there are some Arlington priority credits that incentivize things, particular LEED credits, like renewable energy onsite, onsite habitat, and deeper energy efficiency. And then we have a stretch goal, finally, that is net-zero energy certification. We haven't had a project take us up on this, but it is something that we want to start asking projects now. It's something that is even more attainable now than when we first, or when we last updated this policy in 2014. I think that's where the industry is going. So hopefully, we see some of those soon. And then a couple of frequently asked questions. Some, we are asked often, does new development do LEED certification anyway, and what's the point of incentivizing this? And so the difference between the LEED buildings here is that we only accept LEED version 4, the most updated version of LEED. That uses the 2010 ASHRAE baseline. It's the energy standard. That was a huge leap in the energy standard. And so we still actually get applications on a regular basis that are on the older version of LEED. We have to reject them and say we only accept version 4. And so that's one thing that makes it different. The other thing is that there's a LEED project directory you can search online, and we do this every once in a while, to see if there are any buildings that are by right doing LEED certification. And there are only, over, just since the beginning of this program, there's only been a handful that have certified LEED without doing a program or getting some sort of incentive. And those are mostly government buildings that have a mandate, or federal buildings that have a mandate. So we're not seeing that, buildings, unless there's an incentive, we're not seeing them participate or doing green building. The other frequently asked question we see is, how much density is this? Are we doubling the size of the building? Are we tripling it? In fact, it's only, and I exaggerate, because it's really, a pretty small percentage of the site area is, or of the building area is due to the bonus density for LEED. It's, we haven't updated this in a little bit, in a long time, but it's roughly about 7% of an increase in the building size. And so, I have a little example. So it's an FAR calculation. This is the current program. It's .25 for silver, .35 for gold, and .5 for platinum. We also unfortunately haven't, I don't think, had a platinum commitment. Definitely not in the last four years. And so this is just a really quick hand-drawn example of 2201 North Pershing. And this is, you can see that it's a five, you know, roughly five-story building, 260,000 square feet, and they received 16,800, roughly, square feet of bonus density, but that entire building got LEED certified. And so that's less than 10% of that building's square footage. So just one example. It varies based on the size of the site area, because the site area is what that floor-to-air ratio is based on. So just a ballpark example of the amount of bonus that the program awards. So with that, I just wanted to see what questions you all have. I did bring more photos of building components and motors and such, if you want to see them, but I won't do that unless you really want me to.
Unless asked, which you may be asked. So, any questions, comments? Commissioner Hughes? Commissioner Schwell?
Thank you, Commissioner Siegel. Just real quickly, how does EarthCraft play into this whole conversation? And can you help us understand, just very top level, I know you know all the details, some of the differences that we should expect to see between the two?
So, EarthCraft is really similar to LEED for Homes rating system. LEED for Homes, there's a LEED for Homes mid-rise. That actually applies to mid-rise and high-rise. And so that focuses more on the contractor and how the building is put together. And so the blower door and the duct blaster test, those are done in apartments that get EarthCraft certified or LEED for Homes certified. If you did Building Design and Construction, which is the LEED rating system that office buildings do, they don't do that blower door test or the duct blaster test. And EarthCraft is used on affordable housing developments that are getting VHTA funding. And so if an affordable housing development is doing EarthCraft, then we would award bonus density for that also. We would accept that instead of LEED.
Very good. Commissioner Schwell? And then Commissioner Lynn, tell me. Is that all, Commissioner Hughes? If you have another question, just jump in.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you both for your presentation. A few questions. So, in EarthCraft, is there any kind of accounting for solar-ready guidelines or solar-ready construction as part of that?
I don't know. I have to look, I have to look into that. I know that they have some credit if you do a certain part of the building, or percentage of the building has solar, sorry, covering a certain percentage of the energy load. But I can look into that and get back to you.
Yeah, that would be helpful, especially as you mentioned, trying to kind of increase installation onsite. You mentioned that, you know, we don't see many LEED buildings by right. And I was wondering if you knew of any examples outside of Arlington, you know, in the nation, are we seeing a similar pattern? If there's no incentives, you're not seeing it? Or are we seeing kind of a different scenario?
Right. I know that in office, there's more, it's more common to do LEED than multifamily. So I don't have comparisons for other jurisdictions, Joan, do you have any?
Well, I don't know what other jurisdictions are doing. DC requires it now, so it's not just an incentive, it's a mandate. And definitely for office, there's a market for LEED office buildings. Corporations want to be home, you know, advertise their sustainability commitment, and one of the ways of doing that is to say they're in a LEED building. So there's a market for that. And the federal government has also, still, I think, requires that any leases that they sign are in LEED buildings and Energy Star-rated buildings. So if you want to, if you're a spec developer and you want to fill an office space, you optimize your opportunities by making it LEED.
Right. And there are probably some limitations to what we can do with being in a Dillon Rule state, I'm sure, going down this path. My last question, you both mentioned that there was, you don't know of a platinum application during your tenure, and wondering if you might speak for a moment to why you think that is, and also to the, you know, there's a .5 FAR bonus for platinum, and kind of whether that incentive is inappropriate, or the requirements to get to platinum are too high, and people don't see the need. But I'd be interested in your feedback on that.
I actually think one major reason is that they might not need that much bonus a lot of times. There might be a limitation on height in the area that, where they are, or, and I think there is also the combination of that with, that the, you start running out of easy LEED points. You run out of those earlier now with the updated version of LEED, and it's even harder when you're trying to get to platinum. You have to get, so you have to have all the public transportation, all of the energy points. So for example, I think the Discovery Elementary School, even though it is net-zero energy, it's only achieved LEED gold. And a big part of that was because they don't have public transportation. They had to forfeit a whole number of points for that. And transportation to a site is a big carbon-intensive process, so there's reason for that. So I think that's an illustrative example of how difficult it is to get to LEED platinum in this version 4.
That's helpful. The last thing I'll say is just a comment. When you come back to talk to us about the update, one of the questions we get often is sort of why we're giving density for silver. And so obviously, your points tonight about how much more difficult it is than it was, the program is obviously advancing, but kind of your take on why the argument for still giving a .25 FAR for silver, I think at that time will be useful. So, thank you both.
Thanks.
Just note, there are a couple of buildings, I don't know when they were built, on your list here. It says 1776 Wilson and 1812 North Moore are both platinum, but I don't know when they were built.
Yeah, those were built longer ago, yeah.
So they were under the older standards?
That's right.
Okay. How does the bonus density for green building apply to adaptive reuse buildings, or for buildings that are under historic preservation rules? Does that work, or is it just not, you can really do?
It does work, yeah. So Stafford Place?
So, in EarthCraft, is there any kind of accounting for solar-ready guidelines or solar-ready construction as part of that?
I don't know. I have to look, I have to look into that. I know that they have some credit if you do a certain part of the building, or percentage of the building has solar, sorry, covering a certain percentage of the energy load. But I can look into that and get back to you.
Yeah, that would be, that'd be helpful, especially as you mentioned, trying to kind of increase installation onsite. You mentioned that, you know, we don't see many LEED buildings by right. And I was wondering if you knew of any examples outside of Arlington, you know, in the nation? Are we seeing a similar pattern? If there's no incentives, you're not seeing it? Or are we seeing kind of a different, a different scenario?
Right. I know that in office, there's more, it's more, more common to do LEED than multifamily. So, I don't have comparisons for other jurisdictions, Joan. Do you have any?
Well, I don't, I don't know what other jurisdictions are doing. DC requires it now, so it's not just an incentive, it's a mandate. And definitely for office, there's a, there's a market for LEED office buildings. Corporations want to be home, you know, advertise their sustainability commitment. And one of the ways of doing that is to say they're in a LEED building. So, there's a market for that. And the federal government has also, still, I think, requires that any leases that they sign are in LEED buildings and energy star-rated buildings. So, if you want to, if you're a spec developer and you want to fill an office space, you optimize your opportunities by making it LEED.
Right. And there are probably some limitations to what we can do with being in a Dillon Rule state, I'm sure, going down this path. My last question, you both mentioned that there was, you don't know of a platinum application during your tenure, and wondering if you might speak for a moment to why you think that is, and, and also to the, you know, there's a .5 FAR bonus for platinum, and kind of whether that incentive is inappropriate, or the requirements to get to platinum are too high, and people don't see the need. But I'd be interested in your feedback on that.
I actually think one major reason is that they might not need that much bonus a lot of times. There is, there might be a limitation on height in the area that, where they are, or and I think there is also the combination of that with that the, you start running out of easy LEED points. You run out of those earlier now with the updated version of LEED, and it's even harder when you're trying to get to platinum. You have to get, so you have to have all the public transportation, all of the, the energy points. So, for example, I think the Discovery Elementary School, even though it is net-zero energy, it's only achieved LEED gold. And a big part of that was because they don't have public transportation. They had to forfeit a whole number of points for that. And transportation to a site is a big carbon-intensive process. So, there's reason for that. So, I think that's an illustrative example of how difficult it is to get to LEED platinum in this version 4.
That's helpful. The last thing I'll say is just a comment. When you come back to talk to us about the update, one of the questions we get often is sort of why we're giving density for, for silver. And so, obviously, your points tonight about how much more difficult it is than it was, the program is obviously advancing, and, but kind of your take on why the argument for still giving a .25 FAR for silver, I think at that time will be, will be useful. So, so thank you both.
Thanks.
Just note, there are a couple of buildings, I don't know when they were built, on your list here. It says 1776 Wilson and 1812 North Moore are both platinum, but I don't know when they were built.
Yeah, those were built longer ago, yeah.
So, they were under the older standards?
That's right.
Okay. How does the bonus density for green building apply to adaptive reuse buildings, or for buildings that are under historic preservation rules? Does that work, or is it just not, you can really do?
It does work, yeah. So, Stafford Place right now is under construction in Balston. That's a gut renovation of the National--
NSF building.
NSF building, if you're familiar with that one. So, they're, they're keeping all of their insulation. They've actually added insulation to the roof area. They're doing all-new lighting. They took out all the HVAC equipment and put in what they really had to focus on, because they weren't changing the walls and making, you know, adding additional insulation. They're keeping the same windows. And those are really big ticket items for saving energy. Since they aren't touching those, they are putting in very efficient HVAC equipment to help try to minimize their energy use and meet that LEED standard. So, that's under the new version of LEED, and it's a reuse also. 1400 Crystal Drive in Crystal City, that was built maybe five or six years ago. That was in a building reuse also, and they resk, they did a whole new, whole reskining of it and actually bumped out and added some square footage on each floor. So, that participated. So, there are definitely ways to do it.
Good. And this is more of a comment rather than a question, but it strikes me, given that they might not be going to the higher levels because there just isn't the density there to be taking advantage, should we in fact be rethinking our height limits and our density limits in the corridors? Because certain parts of the RB corridor, we really don't have to worry about the FAA rules, like if we're down in Balston, Virginia Square, maybe we should be going higher. I mean, that's, it's environmentally friendly to put density by transit where there's already a huge infrastructure in place that can handle it. Our water, electricity, transit can all handle much more, I think, than what we actually have there. And maybe this is the way to do it, is to start thinking about allowing more height, more bulk in these areas. Anyway, that's just a comment.
That, that actually is a fascinating comment. Obviously, it would maybe begin with a board review of GLUP and studies that are broader than what this unit, unit does, but it's an interesting comment. Commissioner Morton? And then Commissioner McSweeney?
Thanks for the presentation. Can you talk about how you pick the Arlington priority questions, and whether that gets reviewed from time to time, and what's worked, and what seems appealing, and what hasn't so far?
Yeah. So, we did, when we were doing this update in 2014, we did a lot of interviews of some planning commissioners, board members, staff, developers, engineers. We did a lot of one-on-one interviews, and we pulled out some themes from those interviews. We did this process called design thinking, where you just take all these notes, organize all of the notes on theme. And there were some definite, there were, so renewable, so that's where, where those came from. So, renewable energy, and actually, building reuse is another priority credit. Should have mentioned that. So, so we, it's from feedback that we got in Arlington, and also pushing towards community energy plan goals. So, that's why the focus on energy efficiency and renewable energy. And I think we do need to update them, because we're starting to see that the priority credits for energy efficiency are actually being taken up by all, once we start seeing adoption, it starts to signal to us that maybe we should maybe make it a minimum program requirement and no longer a bonus anymore. So, that's something that, that we're considering.
Okay. Yeah, that was something. I was wondering whether there are some things that are being so accepted now that they should be rolled in.
Right, yeah. Still not renewable energy. We don't see that a whole lot still, unfortunately. So, I do see us pushing for that more in somehow in this next round.
So, the, we update the program for that exact reason. We want to make sure we're incentivizing something that people aren't going to be doing anyway. And the world changes, technology changes, people learn things, and so, we're always trying to stay one step ahead. And we're, we're kind of at that point now where people have gotten used to LEED before a little bit more. There's still some pushback, but there's some things I think we need to push a little bit harder to get. One other thing I just wanted to add, maybe this is obvious to most people, but if you build a slightly bigger building to, that uses less energy, that building actually uses, the bigger building uses less energy than the smaller building would use if it didn't, if it was just built to code. So, the, the bigger building has a smaller environmental footprint, the slightly bigger building, which is one of the reasons why this program actually works.
Just Commissioner McSweeney, and then again, Commissioner Lantelme.
Thank you very much for this, for this informational item. I will say, since we get to see, we only see building by building, and we very seldom get to see like the cumulative effect, cumulative effects of, of all of the approvals over time. So, I think this is great, to be able to look at, at things in this way. I was glad you mentioned Discovery Elementary, and I was gonna, I did go through and look up where some of, what some of the buildings were in your final slide. And I noted that a lot of them are affordable housing, and also, a lot of our schools have also, if they're not LEED, they certainly use, you know, geothermal and a lot of green building techniques. And so, what I would say is, next time you come back, I'd be really interested to know how many of our public buildings, you know, schools, and also how much affordable housing tends to be green. And the reason I think that's important is because, you know, throughout, when you, when you read comment, comments on articles, or are engaged in conversations across the county, smart growth and density really get a bad rap. And this is one of those areas where it makes a lot of sense to, to go a little bigger. And also, you know, I think our schools and also affordable housing, it's often pointed out that they're more expensive projects. And I think a lot of the time, it's because of not only the green building, but some of the other requirements we, we put on them. So, it's, it would be really good to kind of understand how they contribute to, you know, the overall greenness of Arlington.
Commissioner Lantelme?
And I lost the point. I'll come back.
Okay. Commissioner Ricks, then we can come back.
I wanted to ask Jessica about page five, total county energy use and total county water use. In those two graphs, are they being assessed on a square foot basis?
That is total energy use. So, that is data that we, our energy manager has gotten from Dominion and from Washington Gas. It does exclude federal government.
I ask because over the 10-year range of the graph, I'm assuming there's considerable increase in, in building area from 2016 to 2006. And even though there's a savings, it's not as great as you might think it is, as it actually is, because in 2016, there's considerably more building area at that time.
Right. So, if you did it on a per-square-foot basis, it would be a more dramatic downward trend.
Or show in these columns, the incremental increase in overall building. The savings is much bigger than the graphics would indicate.
Right. It's good feedback. Thanks.
Surely. Go ahead. Commissioner Hughes?
Thank you, Commissioner Siegel. You mentioned the source of your data, and I just want to make sure, just to make sure that I'm reading the graph that, that Commissioner Ricks brought up. You said the data came from Washington Gas and Dominion. Is that, and did not include our federal clients? Is that also including single-family residences, or just multifamily residences?
It includes all, includes also county energy use.
So, includes single-family and all other building sources? Wow, that's really then dramatic.
Commissioner Lantelme?
One point is, we did touch upon building codes. Is there any reason why we would not want to have the basic LEED levels be part of the building codes? Is that something outside of our control, or?
I'm sorry, I missed the critical word, I think, that you--
Is it, is, is the building, are the building codes within Arlington's ability to change, or is that a state issue?
That's a state issue, yeah.
Because it struck me that if we could have at least the basic level of LEED put into the building codes, that could free up this incentive for other priorities we would need also.
We do have an energy code, an energy code inspectors. It's, the LEED program, though, would go beyond that.
It also strikes me, this is again, a comment, when you go through, for example, the water usage, which is dropping, and that's great. It isn't simply that it's sustainable. It also directly saves everybody in this county potentially enormous amounts of money. The need to expand the capacity of the sewage treatment plant, the water system is enormously expensive, requires bonds, requires payments, the water bills will go up. By not, by having the water levels drop, it allows the county, one, to grow, but to grow without having to spend more money. It's like, it's a very, very cost-efficient thing to do. People don't tend to realize that when they get these, they complain about low-flow toilets or something, or faucets, but they're, they affect everybody who lives in this county's bottom line. I think that's something that really tends to get lost in the PR on it, and we really should be bringing that sort of thing out. So, again, just a comment.
Thank you for the comment. Commissioner Ricks, you wanted to follow up, and then Commissioner Guerin.
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up on your comment about recertification. I think people don't understand how consequential that is in the new LEED 4. That was one of my big criticisms with LEED, that a building only had to qualify when it was initially commissioned, which is much easier to do than it is 10 years down the road, once you've replaced the equipment, you've gone through two building engineers, and they're not trained, and didn't have that, that moment when they knew they had to get certified, when the building was about to be certified. So, recertification is really huge. And refresh my memory, how often does, is that for perpetuity, and how often does it happen?
That's actually the only, so for office, only office is where it's required, if they participate in the program. And so, that's just one time within four years of operation that they have to earn the energy star. For multifamily and for hotel, it's optional. And so, we really try to encourage them to, to take us up on, that's an Arlington priority, to recertify on our energy star. Not everybody does it, but we do try to push them in that direction.
Would that be something that Arlington could sort of build into a local code requirement?
It could be part of our incentive program, but by, because of the Dillon Rule, we wouldn't be allowed to make it a code requirement, because we're not allowed to have any program that would supersede the Virginia Energy Code.
I, I think recertification is just critical.
Agreed.
Thank you for the comment. Commissioner Guerin?
Thank you for the presentation. I can see the intersection here between affordability and the green infrastructure. So, I didn't realize that we were monitoring both for sort of construction and operation. Is there a way that you can share with us the savings for an affordable housing development to the renters, to show how much more affordable it is for them in a green building? You understand what I'm asking?
Yeah, I can share, there's a VHTA report, Virginia Housing Development Authority, that was done in concert with Virginia Tech, I think, and EarthCraft, who does the certification. And that, I'm fairly positive they have annual energy savings. I think it's around $600 a year, but I can get you the report.
Jessica, I would really appreciate that, because what I hear from the affordable housing developers is, it's a hard argument for them to make, to ask for more money upfront than the minimum to get the housing developed. But since we have a great desire mandate to provide more affordable housing, if the savings is significant enough for individual renters, I'm wondering if this, this can help us move forward in that direction. So, thank you.
We, we talk about affordable living, not just affordable housing. So, you know, rent is one thing, but if your utility bills are so high that you can't afford to live there, that's not affordable. So, we, we try to use the term affordable living, because it incorporates that whole, the bigger picture.
Commissioner Hughes?
Thank you, Commissioner Siegel. Could we go back to that slide that has the building, the little nice diagram? I love it. So, 20 years ago, we, we come forward and we do this incentive plan, and we're still focused on a very small slash of our, our land use. And so, I, correct me if I'm wrong, we currently don't have any incentive plan in our single-family or six, or five, or duplex districts for encouraging or providing any extra incentives for building higher-standard homes? Is that correct?
So, we're able to do this program under site plan, because we have control of the zoning ordinance, and site plans fall under the zoning ordinance. For single-family homes, we can't require anything. Arlington does have our own Green Home Choice program, which also is run by a colleague of ours out of our office. It's been around probably 15 years now. And maybe Mr. Ricks knows about this. It's a, it's similar to the EarthCraft Home Program. It focuses heavily on energy efficiency, but it has water and all the other things as well. And we've got, I think there've been 300 and, well, some, 300 and something homes certified in the county using that program. It's very hands-on. Helen, the woman that runs it, goes out and coaches and all of that kind of stuff, but it's voluntary. It's not required.
And there's no incentive at all for the owner? There's no relief of far setbacks, or lock coverage, or anything such as that?
We have tried to do expedited permitting for that, and that works in some instances, but you have to get multiple permits, and some offices can't do expedited permitting because the load is just too heavy.
Sort of a internal helping the bureaucracy, but--
Yeah.
Okay.
The, the big benefit of Green Home Choice is you have a, a coach, and Helen will come and help you figure out what, what to do, and you're not, that, that's kind of the big incentive at this point.
So, Madam Chair, 20 years ago, how do we start this conversation on multifamilies? That's the, the focus of my question, in one minute or less, if anybody knows.
Were multifamily that's not high-rise? Or you mean like duplexes?
The site plan process. How do we, as a community, start that conversation and, and generate these types of results?
20 years ago, LEED was kind of the thing. Everybody was talking about it, and a colleague and I were very intrigued, and we worked on the Langston Brown School, which was built in the early 2000s. And we decided that, you know, the county can build our own buildings, because we have control over that, but the, but site plan's where we really needed to get, if you want to make some, some bang for the buck, you've got to get those big buildings. So, we came up with this program. We tried it out. At first, it didn't really go anywhere, but then slowly it happened. We tweaked it a few times. And now, virtually every site plan process, site plan project participates in one way or another. A couple of them don't, but it's been very successful. Developers like it. They get a slightly bigger building, more rent every year. The county likes it, because we get more property tax. The environment likes it, because it sits more lightly on the land. The buildings are not noticeably bigger because of this program, and a little bit, but it's not like we're building, you know, 30-story buildings because of this project. So, it's been, it's a win-win-win.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner McSweeney?
Just as a follow-up to your question, Mr. Hughes, if you could refresh my memory, I do think that maybe you do get points as a multifamily affordable building on the VHTA worksheet for low-income housing tax credits, right? You do get points. So, that is another way, I think, that at least the affordable multifamily buildings became part of this conversation, because it was a way to further ensure that they get low-income housing tax credits. And then I would think that, as a single-family homeowner, you know, just down the line, you'd be saving money on your, on your utilities. So, that would, you know, certainly be a factor.
Very good. Are there any more questions? If not, I have just one or two, two questions. Can you give us a sense, and maybe I'm asking for, you can give a precise answer, maybe not, do you find that developers, this is an incentive program, but do you find that a developer comes along, or maybe not, who looks for the incentive, how much more building he can, he or she can develop, but would, would go a little bit further, even if the, the bonus was already, the bonus was already fulfilled at the top? Do you find that, I mean, you do, if you use green building techniques, you save money. That's the basis on which the green building program works. And I understand LEED certification in those terms. But I'm, I'm just wondering if there, if the bonus to be achieved, can be achieved at Silver, would they go for-- at silver, would they go for gold anyway? Or not? I think that's the question.
I think we typically see them going, they, they don't want to, so there's a bond associated with the LEED certification, so it's between $200,000 and $1 million, based on the size of the building, and so they don't want to forfeit that. And so we typically see them overachieving, getting, having some buffer points. So there have been cases where they've committed to silver and gotten gold, for example.
Oh, good. That suggests the program is really, really quite effective. My next question is, I think Mr. Dooley, when he came here, mentioned CPACE, Commercial Property-Assisted Clean Energy. I believe that's what the program is, which is a program based on finance. There's also residential PACE, or regular PACE, that some other localities around the country have used. That seems to be off, off the table. When I worked in that program some years ago in a different capacity, I think the problem was the mortgage providers were just not willing, at least in Virginia, to engage in a program in which you could get better financing, because your house would be more energy efficient. So we, I don't know that we asked Mr. Dooley this, and it may be unfair to ask you if it is, I'll just withdraw the question, but do we think about that? I mean, that, that could help with some of the buy-right issues.
It could help with buy-right. It could also help with existing buildings that really need help renovating and improving the existing building stock.
But that's, that, that has to do with lobbying the state, I, I gather.
So one of the issues is the, the lending side and the residential side. So Fannie and Fetty and some of the other ones have had some issues with, with residential PACE that they don't have with, with commercial PACE. And so it's not necessarily, well, there, there isn't the framework by the state to do residential PACE at the moment, but there's also some other structural barriers as well, so that are beyond our state.
And I think this was all, this problem was exacerbated after 2008 with the, the housing crisis. I think that was, that was really a major blow to localities who wanted to do this sort of financing. Anyway, my final question is, what, can you specify what Arlington might be able to do with respect to or in line with the Paris Climate Accord? You mentioned it at the beginning of your, your talk.
Right, yeah. So, so I, we've been looking at what other countries are doing for their, with their building codes and their stretch codes, and the, the energy standards that they're reaching for. That's just good information for us to have, to, to benchmark against. So, and I, I'm not very, incredibly familiar. I'm most familiar with our community energy plan goals, but they're all going in the same direction, and that's further than where we are now.
So perhaps in your re-up, your redo, we, we might see some of those influences, perhaps?
We can share that research, yeah.
Yes, certainly. Very good. If there is nothing else, thank you very, very much for...
Thanks for having us.
...the information. It's a successful program, and we're, we're delighted to work with it. We work with it on many site plans, so thank you very much.
Thanks.
Well, that concludes our regular programming, and I think now we'll turn to some organizational matters. Let's begin with approval of the minutes. Let's do them one by one. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes for November 5?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Schroll?
I move adoption of the minutes from the Arlington County Planning Commission meeting dated Monday, November 5, 2018.
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Lantelme. All in favor? That's going to be, we're unanimous, so I won't call for opposed or other.
Madam Chair?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Schroll.
I move that the Planning Commission adopt the minutes from the Arlington County Planning Commission meeting dated Wednesday, November 7, 2018.
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Lantelme. All in favor? You got that? One, two, three. Got it? Opposed? No opposition, but we have some abstentions. Thank you very much. Three abstentions. Ms. Bowling, do you have a staff report on current matters?
Nope.
We're rolling right along.
Yes.
Nope. Okay, thank you very much. Site Plan Review Committee, I think Ms. Bowling asked me to just confirm that Commissioner Schroll would be doing the, the Harris Teeter Project. Are there any outstanding SPRC chairs that you need, SPRCs who need chairs at this moment?
No, that was the only one I just wanted to double-check. Other than that, I think everything's under, either has a, an SPRC chair, or is still under preliminary, so we're not quite at that point yet. But in the next few weeks to a month, might need some, need some chairs.
Very good. Thank you for that. For the LRPC, Commissioner Yakimini unfortunately can't be here due to a death in the family. I would only mention that the POPS LRPC is, it's December 12, correct?
Next Wednesday.
That would be next Wednesday.
Public Art Master Plan.
And the Public Art Master Plan, thank you.
I think that part has been withdrawn.
Is that right? Has the, so we will not be reviewing that at LRPC next Wednesday? We will not? Okay, so then it's just the PSMP or POPS. Commissioner Schroll? Yes?
To our, maybe to our clerk, does that mean that the Public Art Plan is not, no longer tracking POPS going forward into January or February? Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk.
So that would be reviewed separately? That was the intent of the question. Okay, very good. Do we have a ZOCO report?
Yes, very good. Thank you, Madam Chair. First, I want to draw your attention to a handout that we all got tonight. I know we don't all like paper copies, but I did ask Nick Rogers to prepare this for us, because these are the updates from this year. And so for those of us who check our printed version, now you have them. You don't need to keep track of them, which ones do you have a current version of. But, you know, we do a lot of good work on ZOCO throughout the year, and you can insert this and update your own ordinance. Secondly, next week, we will have an informational ZOCO meeting on the Child Care Initiative. So this is a chance for us to ask questions and give some general feedback. We will be making decisions regarding that in 2019. So that's Tuesday.
Great, thank you. PFRC, Commissioner Schroll?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Last week, we had a meeting on the Ed Center, PFRC, BLPC, where you saw some preliminary thoughts for the schematic design. We didn't see elevations, but we did see some of what they wanted to do around, kind of the windows, fenestration, also some kind of preliminary thoughts of how to connect Ed Center to the existing school. Not the greatest design, and great design thoughts. We hope they come back with something better. You can ask Commissioner Lantelme his way he couched it after the meeting.
Oh, that sounds exciting.
But, so hopefully we get something back better. There is a open house Wednesday at Washington Lee in the library. They'll have the same presentation they had last week, so nothing new at this, but it is an opportunity to drop by and see what's being proposed and, and ask questions. And then on December 19th will be another PFRC/BLPC meeting, to hopefully see a full kind of schematic design, elevations at that time, hopefully. It could be the last meeting for this process. That's not been determined yet, but it could be the last meeting on this process. So I guess, wait and see.
And the time for the open house? Is that 6:30 or 7?
It's 7, sorry. Both meetings start at 7:00. Yes, and it's in the library at Washington Lee. And then the next meeting on the 19th also starts at 7:00 to 9:00 PM, and it should be in the cafeteria.
At Washington Lee?
Yeah, at Washington Lee.
Okay, cool. Great. Thank you very much, Commissioner Schroll. Commissioner Hughes? No talking, no silence.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We will be meeting in January for our Form Base Code review of the work plan, and we have at least one project, and I think a few coming up next year, so forward to 2019.
Very good. Thank you very much. So that concludes those reports. I do have a Chair's Report, and I wanted to, I guess, where this will, this and then our nominations will close our meeting. First, I wanted to thank you all for your support during this year. I am really very proud of the work we've done together. Commission work is challenging, and I think together we have overcome some of the obstacles that I think existed in the beginning of the year. There are three main areas where I think we've made some progress. First, we supported several new and newish commissioners as they undertook SPRC and other tasks. Getting familiar with this job and its assignments is often a matter of learning by doing, sort of an apprenticeship. We did this by teaming up more experienced commissioners with newer ones in our SPRC work, as well as for our zoning committee, ZOCO. A shout-out to Commissioner Guerin, and Commissioner Weir, and others. And for the Long Range Planning Committee, and thanks again to Commissioner Yakimini. Thanks to all the commissioners who've jumped in to support that effort. I hope we continue these kinds of partnerships as we do our work going forward into a busy year. Second, I want to thank everyone for helping to produce the Citizens' Guide to the SPRC. I presented the guide to the board last Tuesday to a very warm reception. Our work requires a pretty fair technical understanding of the procedures of Arlington County planning and zoning, but public perspectives proceed from lived experience, and the Citizens' Guide was designed to speak to residents from that perspective. I hope the guide will better orient the public to the SPRC process, and how that process can both inform them and help them and us create better community spaces. How we understand consensus was a key issue raised by many commissioners as we reviewed drafts of the guide. I must say, it proved challenging to achieve consensus on how we understand what it means to achieve or identify consensus. Appropriately, that is the central task of the work we do in a county that acts only after hearing all perspectives from all stakeholders. Thirdly, the commission has in recent years, I think, made better use of the county's urban design and research staff, led by Chris Kreider. This staff within CPHD has been operating for about five years, I think. We have increasingly reached out to members of this unit to give us different perspectives and alternatives on a range of issues, from massing to open space, from site design to building architecture, helping us to evaluate an applicant's proposal. These are not my achievements, they are our collective achievements, and I again thank you for your support for my chairmanship this year, and I look forward to the year to come. Now, if you'll indulge me just a little bit longer, we come to nominations for officers for next year. As you know, the Planning Commission rotates its officers, Chair and Vice Chair, every year. Our practice is to base our rotation on seniority. This year, there were several candidates with equal tenure, and Commissioner Schroll has stepped forward and offered to chair the commission next year. Mr. Schroll has been on the commission since 2015. He chaired the Public Facilities Review Committee in 2017. He is a former member of the county's Transportation Commission, and previously served as President of the Arlington County Civic Association, and his Neighborhood Civic Association. Before formally nominating Commissioner Schroll, I'd like to share some advice with my fellow commissioners, if you will indulge me, a lesson I have learned through my six years on this body and the last year as its chair. The commission's role is not administrative, it is deliberative and democratic. We were chosen by the county board to advise on what we hear from the people of Arlington on a given site plan or program in light of existing plans and policies, and to advise the board based on the broad experiences and backgrounds of commission members. Commissioners come from diverse backgrounds and interests, donate a great deal of time to this endeavor, and should, at the end of the day, feel that they understand the issues and can contribute meaningfully to the quality advice the board has asked us to provide. Quality advice requires deliberation and discussion. Of course, we must come to our public meetings prepared with a knowledge of the basic facts of a site plan or use permit, but inevitably, there will be deeper, unanticipated, and complex implications of planning, zoning, and land use. Commissioners, in my view, have an obligation to explore these issues to their satisfaction. No issue should be a priori off the table. Put another way, one person's rabbit hole may be another person's silver mine. Yes, we have a busy calendar. Yes, we need to get through it efficiently. And yes, what we call the Arlington Way can sometimes prove unwieldy and tiresome, but we cannot sacrifice our effectiveness and quality of our advice on the altar of efficiency. So the lesson for me is that I hope all commissioners and future commission chairs take to heart, is that our success in Arlington and our success as a commission comes from hearing out our fellow citizens, members of the development community, and fellow commissioners. In the interest of saving time, people must not feel shut down or shut out. The commission must foster an atmosphere that calls for open, constructive dialogue and conversation, as this is the most effective way for us to give our best advice. So now, without further ado, I nominate Commissioner Schroll to chair the commission for 2019. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Lantelme beat you to the punch. Is there discussion? If not, I'm going to call for a vote. All in favor? We're unanimous. I'm going to open the floor for an additional nomination. Commissioner Schroll?
Thank you, Madam Chair. With the Chair's indulgence, I would like to...
Please, make, make, make your comments. I'm so sorry.
...love to make a nomination for Vice Chair. I want to thank you all for your support and the trust that you've placed in me for the next year. Also, I do want to thank Commissioner Siegel for all her great work over the last year's chair, and particularly, as she highlighted in her own Chair's Report, for her work on the Citizens' Guide. It was a big undertaking, over many months, and it's an important document for the commission and, and for the community at large to have. I also want to thank the former commissioners that I had the pleasure to serve with, for their help and guidance over the years. I'm a better commissioner because of them. As we transition to the next year, we do have, you know, busy months ahead. As Ms. Bowling noted, there are already many site plans on the horizon, and it's kind of unclear what additional work the Amazon announcement will create. We're going to have to be flexible during this time, and everybody's going to have to step up. As was noted by our guests this evening, we're kind of a relatively young commission. Most of us on the dais are in our first term. One of my goals for the upcoming year is to continue to build on the commission's capacity so that we're able to deal with the expected workload. The Planning Commission will need newer commissioners to take on more responsibilities. I want to carry on the concept championed by Commissioner Siegel of having commissioners shadow more experienced commissioners in processes so that newer commissioners can learn as they move along. Also, I want to empower commissioners to take on new roles and grow. As projects such as working groups arise, I work with, I will work with the Vice Chair to make sure that we're sharing those responsibilities while also aligning them with people's interests. Finally, my goal for the upcoming year is to make sure that we run efficient meetings. With so much on our plate, we need to balance the need to address important issues, providing proper guidance to the county board, while getting through our meeting agendas in a timely manner. I thank you again for... I thank you again for your support. Look forward to working with you in this capacity in the next year.
Very good. Forgive me for jumping ahead, and thank you for your remarks. Yes, please.
Madam Chair, I would like to nominate Elizabeth Gierin for the position of Vice Chair of the Planning Commission.
Second. Second by me.
Madam Chair, if I can speak to my motion...
Please.
Elizabeth has served on the commission since December 2015, and in my opinion, will make a great Vice Chair. She has served as ZOCO Chair, where she has tackled many difficult issues. Elizabeth chaired the Kirkwood and Washington Boulevard Special GLUPP Process. That was a long, challenging process with many stakeholders, but she did a fantastic job. She has also chaired several key site plans, and she's done a great job with that as well. Elizabeth is a former member of the county's Park and Recreation Commission, and she has also served on the PFRC where she has considered numerous schools projects. Elizabeth is not just a citizen planner. She has her PhD in urban planning and development, which is critical training that she brings to her commission undertakings. She is also, she, sorry, she is always dedicated to doing the best job possible. She stresses the small stuff while keeping the big picture in mind. Elizabeth wants to make sure we're asking important questions, pushing our community forward, and being inclusive in our county processes. I know she will make a great Vice Chair in 2019, and she has all the skills necessary to step into the Chair, the role of Chair the year after. I look forward to working with her collaboratively with her in the upcoming year.
Thank you, Commissioner Schroll. Any other comments? Or shall we proceed to a vote? Looks like we should proceed to a vote. All in favor of the nomination? We are unanimous, ready to march into the future. If there is no other business or comments, no other, no other comment? Would you like to say something, Elizabeth?
Thank you. I look forward to continuing to work with all of you. James, those were lovely sentiments. I hope I live up to those.
And I'm sure you will. Commissioner Hughes?
I want to say thank you to both Commissioner Schroll and Commissioner Gierin for stepping up to the table this year. I think it's going to be an exciting year, and I know that we all have a great deal of fun in front of us, so I look forward to it.
Bon, thank you for that. That's, that's good. Till, certainly till mid-year, and we should all encourage Commissioner Hughes to continue on after that. Commissioner Weir, would you like to say something? No. Oh, Commissioner, I'm sorry, I couldn't see. Commissioner McSweeney.
Thank you, thank you very much, Madam Chair. I just wanted to take a second to thank you for your leadership this year. I've really enjoyed working with you. I think everybody brings their own set of skills to this role. It certainly is a very difficult role, I think. I know people think it's easy, but it's really not. To balance your own interest in asking questions and also make sure the meeting keeps moving is really a skill. So, thank you very much, and also for all your thoughtfulness. You are an incredibly thoughtful commissioner, and I know you've put a lot of energy and effort into the Citizens' Guide, and I think we all benefited from the conversations we had with you. I also just want to say thank you and congratulations to both Commissioner Schroll and Commissioner Gierin. I definitely look forward to working with you this year. I've already learned a lot from both of you, so I think it will be a good year.
And I wanted to just, thank you very much for those kind words. And I do want to say, I think we do learn an enormous amount from our fellow commissioners, which really motivated me to sort of mention who we are, how we work together. It's hard, we're diverse, but when we have a good conversation, good deliberation, I think we, we come up with quality advice. So, if anybody else has a comment, and if not, then I will call the meeting adjourned. Thank you very much.
So, yeah, liaison assignments right now are just kind of FYI in your package, and so I think you're the, you're the only old commissioner I think has done it.
Liaison...
No, I'm just putting that for January.
For January?
Yeah, yeah.
The selection is in, but the way we choose is by seniority and we go around. If there's something, though, if there's something you particularly want...